We're going to start with Co-op Cincy. And we have a list of speakers. And Barbelle, who is Chief of Staff for our Congressman Greg Lansman, is going to kick us off and tell us who's speaking when. And so let me just say that we're excited. Co-op Cincy does really fantastic work. Started in Mondragon, Spain. And so this wonderful group went there to see where it all started. So we're really excited about that. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Barbelle.
Alrighty. Well, thank you so much for having us. Please excuse me. I'm so excited to be back in the chambers and seeing those who run our city on the deos once again. So I'm excited to be here. Okay.
We're excited that you're here. Thank you for coming.
Excellent. I couldn't stay away. So I'm here today just to kick it off as we get started to share about one of our organizations in the city amongst so many that are doing so well and so much great work, especially for those that are marginalized and for those in our community, which is Co-op Cincy. So I want to start off by saying thank you for having us here. We have a group of dedicated and wonderful community stakeholders who were a part of the delegation, also who are advocates and champions for the work that Co-op is doing. So thank you for having us. So Co-op Cincy is a wonderful organization that this city council, and even on the last budget, supported unanimously financially. So we're grateful for that. They are coming back this year. They are in need of additional support, as most organizations are. So we want to share some of the in-depth work that's being done. We took a trip to Spain a little while ago, which some of you were invited, unable to attend because of budget. So you had to handle the budget first, which we respect. I was fortunate enough to be with Co-op Cincy on this tour and on behalf of Congressman Greg Lansman, who also supported Co-op when he was here during his tenure. Alrighty. So some of the takeaways from Spain as we get started, they're going to share a little bit about Co-op and the backdrop. Some of us know the organization but not know like the premises of the organization, what they do, how they do it. Co-op Cincy and cooperatives are not only in Cincinnati. There are cooperatives in Dayton. There are cooperatives internationally. So it is a form of entrepreneurship, but in Cincinnati, we have a large plethora of different orgs connected to it. With that being said, some of the things that I will say about our trip to Spain and some takeaways. The model, what was embedded in their model was innovation and constant cooperation. They're constantly researching on what's best, what's next, how can we keep our organization and our cooperatives thriving, which is key. Sometime we have small businesses or organizations that start and they're not projecting past the business plan. And so one thing that we learned in Spain is their innovation is so palpable. They're constantly looking at what's next. And that's why they were able to thrive throughout the years. Co-op's work on securing a lot of positions locally. So their focus is not just to reach outside of their region. Their focus is to support those in the region. With that being said, I want you to know that equity is a big key for Co-op's. And we have a mix of them here. You'll see that as they begin to come up. I want to bring the experts up to kick this off and get us going on this journey.
Thank you so much.
I'm one of the co-directors and Ellen Vera is the other co-director. And thanks, Ellen, for the help with the slides. We are really excited to be here. We will tell you more about us, but we're going to start with a little bit about what worker ownership is, so we're all on the same page. So worker ownership is when workers own the business, control the business, and benefit from it. And this can be done in a few ways. We had examples on our trip of the multiplicity of ways. What we're about are cooperatives, which is one worker, one vote, one share. But there's also this other forum called Employee Stock Ownership Plans. So we had a person, we had some people that are part of those ESOPs. And those can be 100% employee-owned, which is also really exciting. They don't necessarily have the democratic and participatory pieces that can help everyone's potential be unleashed, but they can be that way. And we are committed to help constructing and supporting the development of worker ownership in both of these forms in our area. So the who. Co-op Cincy, what we are about is creating an economy that works for all, especially those that have been historically excluded. And we do that by nurturing an integrated network of worker-owned Co-op's. And we do that based on this extraordinary model that we just got to see, which is absolutely our North Star, which is Mondragon. Because what they have done is what most people feel is 100% impossible. Most of us feel like it is totally impossible to move the needle and create totally thriving communities with almost no poverty and no inequality. And that is what they have done. They've been at it for 70 years, but you'll hear it a few times. They have the lowest levels of inequality of anywhere in Spain, and some of the lowest levels in the world, lowest levels of poverty. And it was not always like that. So that's what we wanted to learn about. How did they do this? How did they change this society that was totally stratified, that had higher levels of poverty than we experience? We wanted to understand in depth, how did they start this? How did they create this integrated network of worker-owned Co-op's? And part of it is that it's an integrated network. So we're going to talk a little more about that. But it's not one Co-op or one business off on its own being buffeted by the global economy. It's this resilient system where these Co-op's share resources together, where they put their profits back into the larger whole and democratically determine where it goes. Because every group experiences downturns. But it works. It's a proven example, and that's what we're modeled on. Let's see where we are in the slides. I'm not great at slides. So that was the who.
Do you want to say anything about the delegation?
Oh, yeah. Ellen highlighted that I should mention people on the delegation. So there were 40 people that went with us, and it was an awesome mix. We were so excited to have amazing faith leaders, amazing community leaders. We had Barbelle, who works with you all, and Greg Lansman. We had our whole staff, except for one who was unable to join us. We had Co-op Dayton's whole staff, because we think like getting this region on fire, we had seven worker owners, but we think getting all of southwest Ohio on fire and ready to make change and work together is what's going to really move the dial for us.
As well as philanthropic leaders as well.
Oh, right. One of them is speaking next. Super cool guy. Alright. So I was talking about the why.
Please, excuse me one second. Could someone turn the lights down, please? Oh, thank you, Ms. Andrews.
So I kind of think I mostly, the why was because we wanted to get all of these folks fired up. Because our goal, and we have a 50-year plan.
Sorry.
Oh, you're working on getting that. Ooh.
I'm sorry.
Nice.
Thank you.
Mood lighting. Alright. So our goal in 50 years is to have completely gotten this greater Cincinnati region to have the lowest levels of poverty, the lowest levels of inequality of anywhere in the United States. And so we went because we wanted to understand in more depth, how did they accomplish this? And we know this is an enormous charge, and lots of people need to come at it in lots of different directions. So connecting with faith leaders and philanthropic leaders and people in Dayton and people in Cincinnati and our worker owners, all of that passion, all of that possibility really needs to be ignited. And what did we do while we were there? We had a chance to visit, we had a chance to visit several of their worker-owned Co-op's. We got to meet with some of the people that were around during the founding or immediately thereafter and hear in more depth about the stories of what Mondragon was like at that time, a place of incredible polarity, actually. It was right after the Spanish Civil War when Mondragon came to life, and there were fascist people living there that supported Franco. There were people that were completely against Franco. That was the majority, but they had these tensions. And violence was erupting in the street. And still, they were able, this priest, exactly, but this is what makes me hopeful, because the level of polarization in our country feels unbearable at times, but it can't have been worse than that. They were like, this was erupting in the streets. And yet, they found bringing to people, people together around needs and connecting around needs, common needs, was something that could really move things forward. They found ways, even though they were disconnected from banks, they found ways to crowdfund. They found ways to bring these things to life. So we got to meet with all kinds of interesting people. We got to meet with the head of their, they have, they have a grocery chain that has over 1,300 locations, 6 million community owners, and 30,000 workers. So this wild one, we got to learn from them, because we have a lot going on with groceries. Also, we got to learn from, well, just their manufacturing Co-op's. They have advanced manufacturing. They have a huge focus on that. We got to learn about solidarity. Well, you'll hear more about this. But there was also some good food and a lot of connected times. And it's a beautiful countryside. And it would be amazing for Cincinnati to develop a deeper, you know, relationship with the Basque region, because they're doing some cool things. And there's some interesting opportunities I found out about yesterday that I'm going to privately share.
Well, you know, we are developing that relationship through you. So this is great.
Okay. So now we're going to have some of our participants who went on the trip come up and share some of their experience. So I think first we have Robert Killen.
Good afternoon, all. Thank you for this opportunity. What I'd say is that in a capitalist society, capital is at the center. It reigns supreme, and workers and everything else is subordinate to it. In a system of cooperatives, and what they've done in Spain, and especially in the Mondragon region, they put workers at the center. And capital, like equipment and other things, is just a tool. And so for me, what this trip made very clear is 11 years ago, when Ellen and Kristin came to Greater Cincinnati Foundation to talk about cooperatives in Mondragon, they gave, they were super excited and very passionate, but their words could not fully articulate what we had a chance to experience at the end of April. To see tens of thousands of individuals across dozens of regions working together and caring more about the collective than simply the individual. I was inspired and excited and can tell you without a shadow of a doubt that every dollar that the Greater Cincinnati Foundation has invested in this movement has been well worth it. Because when you see, and we take for granted, or we think that it's inevitable, that income inequality and wealth inequality and all of that is going to be with us. But when you experience a corporation with more than 80,000 workers, and there's a one-to-five ratio between the top person makes no more than five times the entry-level person, and then it becomes clear why things like wealth inequality and income inequality and social cohesion and solidarity, all of those are necessary things that flow from such a structure. So there's more I could say, but I know I'm one of many speakers you'll hear from. I'm delighted, and we are as, in fact, we're more enthusiastic about our support for Co-op Cincy than we were before. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you to the Greater Cincinnati Foundation for the support.
Now we have George Malinsky.
Good afternoon, and thank you. Again, my name's George Malinsky. I'm a corporate partner at the Taft Law Firm. And I was so delighted to be invited on this trip. I'd heard so many great things about Mondragon, but I really didn't know that much about it, other than it was a very significant business in Spain, and it was very successful. But my purpose in going, in large part as a corporate lawyer who structures businesses and so forth, was to really try to figure out, what is the essence about this structure of this business? What lessons might I be able to bring back to this community that would benefit business here? As it turned out, there were many lessons learned, far too many to get into today. But I think the key to the success in terms of the structure, and Robert touched on this, is from a structural standpoint, it's the widely distributed equity ownership among the workers that intersects with the widely distributed voting rights. So the workers have control of the major decisions of these corporations. So the day-to-day responsibilities are handled, you know, by people who are, you know, doing their jobs, doing what they're good at, but the major decisions are controlled by the workers. And the key to that is that it has the effect of placing the interests of people over the capital, placing people over capital. That is really the key to Mondragon. So what results from that? You have very successful businesses under that model. They're in it for the long run. They're continuously investing in their products and services to remain competitive in a global marketplace. They're investing in their local communities. They're supporting the other businesses in the network for the reasons Kristin described. And they provide steady jobs and careers and wealth-building opportunities for the workers, for a very wide group of people. So in short, it's a great way to do business. It's proven successful at Mondragon. It's already being proven here as successful in Cincinnati. With your support, we can definitely expect to see more successful worker-owned businesses in a network here in Cincinnati, in this region. Thank you.
Thank you. We should also mention that George is Chair of the Zoo Board, so thank you for your work with the zoo as well.
Beautiful. Thank you for inviting me to be here today. I am sorry I had to go a little bit out of order, because I have to run to another event. But I just want to say, this experience was phenomenal, and it really brought it home and really tied in and became full circle to me when Ellen just introduced me to one of her new staff members, Victoria. And they're in partnership, they have a Co-op with two sisters that I grew up, and we lived on the same street, and one of the sister's best friend. So I actually know that this model really works. What I want to say, you know, All In Cincinnati is about advancing Black women through policy and systems change in Hamilton County. And we believe this is one of our economic mobility strategies. So I'm all about action. What we want to do is help create a process around certification for Co-op, similar to MBEs and WBEs. And then also, want to look at how can we create a process where more Co-op's can receive city contracts? Thank you.
And I'm not sure that we properly introduced you, but this is Denisea Porter, who's Head of All In Cincinnati. So thank you for your work as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denisea. Okay. Now we have our faith and community perspective from Pastor Sill and Pastor Lynch.
So Pastor, thank you so much. So Pastor Sill is pastor at New Beginnings.
No, excuse me. Living God Church, not New Beginnings.
Oh, New Beginnings is not in there? Okay.
That's Pastor Tate.
My bad.
Okay, alright. Living God Church on Forest and Harvey.
Correct.
And Avondale. And Pastor Lynch is pastor at New Prospect Baptist Church on Summit Road. Thank you, both of you.
I was extremely elated to be able to go on this trip, because I wanted to find out how I could gather information to improve the quality of life for the people in the community in which I serve. And I was, to my surprise, I found out that it was a priest who established a system to overthrow a system, to improve the quality of life for people. He gathered a level of the people, and he went into the most impoverished neighborhood there was in Spain. And he brought it to a point to where the unemployment rate is the lowest in Spain. And so when I thought about that, I said, wow, this is amazing. And I could imagine his struggle. His struggle was that people looked at him in the beginning, and they said to themselves, what are you doing? And now the question is, how did you do it? And so I went there to find out exactly how this individual, this priest, was able to do what others were unable to do. He had no JD. He had no MBA. He had no political science degree. But he established a system to improve the quality of life of people, because he placed the people over everything else. And so when I thought about that, I thought about the gentleman who taught us about the system. And he said one thing that was important that stuck with me. He said, "It was difficult, but it's possible." It was difficult, but it's possible. And so I believe that here in Cincinnati, it'll be difficult, but it's possible that we can do it. And so I'm grateful for Co-op Cincinnati and for inviting me, and Pastor Lynch for extending the invitation to me.
Thank you.
That's hard to follow. Thank you for allowing us to come and share to the council persons. I also want to thank Co-op Cincy for the invitation. Cynthia Pinchback-Hines, who reached out to me and asked me if I would be interested, and of course I was. Imagine growing up in America as a little black boy, and all your conversations too often are about poverty, inequality, crime. I mean, the stuff that just fills these halls, those conversations that you hear, you grow up with and become engaged in. And then to go to a place like Mondragon, and it was crazy. So I'm sitting there, and before Mondragon, I had just gotten back from Dubai. And I'm in a cab, because I'm black from America. And so I'm asking the cabbie, what's the crime rate? And he's like, huh? But that's, you know, that's my experience, you know? What's the crime rate? What's the poverty rate? What's the inequality? It's like, my goodness, I'm 63 years old, and that's what I have to live. So then I go to Mondragon, and we had none of those conversations about crime. We weren't talking about the poverty rate, other than the fact that it was low. I'm like, man, it must be nice to live where those aren't your major concerns. Can we ever get to that point in this country? And the Co-op model is what I call the CED model, Community Economic Development. And Community Economic Development is where local people, local residents, the cultural people build and sustain the businesses. It is community-led and community-driven. And CED, Community Economic Development, is different than what most cities do and other places. They do community and economic development. So there's an apartment here in our city called Community and Economic Development. CED removes the "and." So when you remove the "and," community and economic development, they are one. When you have community and economic development, oftentimes the community gets stuck with services while the developers get to do economic development. That's not what we saw in Mondragon. The economic development was driven by the community. And as Pastor Sill said, started by a priest, who blew my mind, he started with 11 people. He said, he went and found 11 people. This awesome thing that we witnessed, 11 people, but they were, he found 11 engineers. The priest went and found 11 engineers. And now 70-something years later, you see what we have. I'll just share, one of the businesses that we visited was a catering business. Now, you hear Co-op, you hear catering, and you're thinking, okay, that's nice, something small, you know, a little entrepreneurial thing. This catering business has 13,000 employees. 13,000 employees. I mean, it was, it was just remarkable. And it's women. Are women? Pretty much majority women. It's like a women's own, women started, 13,000. Other than an air mark to us, but this is community-owned, community-driven, community-led. So this work is scalable. Oftentimes, this kind of work, people bring you these ideas, and you're questioning, was it scalable? We can start a small Co-op grocery store in Northside, or, you know, that's nice. Eraski, their grocery store chain, how many stores is it? 1,300 stores. Scalable. So that's the opportunity we have here. So at some point in my life, before I leave here, my conversations aren't always about poverty and crime and inequality, and it gets old. So there's other models of building strong, sustainable, resilient communities. And I thank the council for supporting Co-op Cincy. And of course, I thank Co-op Cincy. And Pastor Sill, in my final words, is, we both realize, as pastors of churches, our churches are pretty much Co-op's themselves. And we're going to work harder to make that a stronger reality as well. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So Pastor Sill and Pastor Lynch, we just really appreciate all the work you all have done over the years, too. And just so fantastic, we go to Pastor Sill's church, for example, at Christmas, where people are lined up all down the street waiting for those bicycles and all kinds of, you know, great gifts. I mean, it's just wonderful. Pastor Lynch, we're there all year round at all the different programs, and appreciate your work on the collaborative agreement and the anti-violence work you're doing and all the development happening in Bonne Hill and Rose Lawn. So you guys are wonderful. We just really appreciate it. So thank you so much. Okay, I'm not going to make a speech after everybody speaks. Just, it's my chance to say thank you, because you're here. Okay, Ellen, who's next?
Yes. So now we have some of our worker owners from some of our Co-op businesses. So Araceli, and Tricia, and Phil, if you guys want to come up.
Good to see you.
Hello.
Hello.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Araceli Ortiz. My background is in healthcare and social services. I feel honored to be here and to share my experience with you, because it was really amazing. And I'm a worker owner for the cleaning Co-op, Cincy Cleaning Co-op. We provide residential cleaning, post-construction, moving, move-out. And we are very successful. I'm really proud of the team that I manage, and we have big plans to expand. We started working two days a week, then it was, then we were increasing to three days to five days. Now, sometimes we work six days. The goal is to have, like I said, multiple teams. So right now, we're operating with two teams. And we are working on getting more commercial cleaning as well. We recently got two clients for commercial cleaning. And I think the Co-op model is really amazing. It works. But we really have to believe and have faith that we are able to have a good connection with our community. And that's, that's something that has been very helpful. I mean, being in social services, I love working with the community. And it's, it's working well, and we appreciate all your support.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tricia Hay. I'm a worker and preschool teacher, and I'm one of the owners of Shine Nurture Center. We're a child.
And Tricia, get a little closer to the mic, please. Sorry.
We're a nature-based childcare center in Mount Airy. We spend all day outside. We have kids eight weeks to six years old, and we spend almost all day outside with them. We take them to the woods for hikes, and we're really play-based and child-led. And we have a very long waitlist of families. About a year and a half ago, we transitioned to worker ownership. Our director sold the business to five of us. And we transitioned, and it's been really amazing being able to have that experience, because I feel like as, what I've seen, what I saw in Mondragon and what I've seen in our business is how much, when you empower your employees and give them ownership, they really step up, and you really like care about making your business successful, and you really want to, you start to hear all of these diverse voices that you might not have heard when you just had one owner that was in charge of everything. You're starting to hear, get more ideas and hear more ideas for solving problems. And I've really seen that happen at our workplace, even people that aren't owners. Even people that aren't owners that work for us feel more comfortable coming to us to, with their ideas. And they come to meetings and they're not even owners, they don't have to be there, but they still come to meetings to contribute and to hear about the cooperative and what we're doing. And I saw that in Mondragon also, how when you give the, when you empower people, that really changes how workplaces function and it makes people more confident. And I think another thing I took away from it was how you can't just function as one small business when you build that out into a community and you make connections with other people, then you can support each other. And I feel like that's what Co-op Cincy has really been doing, is helping us make connections within the community and with each other. And that's brought us together to solve a lot of, help us solve problems with each other and empower us to work as a larger community as well.
Great. Welcome.
My name's Phil Waller. I'm a co-founder of Calabash Distribution. We're a cooperative working to support community-led food retailers through supply chain and logistics. You know about our co-founder Mona Jenkins and her community's effort to bring Queen Mother's Market to Walnut Hills. Just like Mona, there are courageous leaders all around this city who are establishing mission-based and community-led food retail in neighborhoods that are facing food apartheid. And because of the grotesque economics of our day, each community retail effort is difficult to sustain. But at Calabash, we see that small retailers can thrive by working together through collective wholesale purchasing, collective inventory management, collective warehousing and logistics. Working collectively is a radical organizational strategy that is not possible within a winner-takes-all economy. But Mondragon is a shining example that we don't have to operate that way. We can have an economy that prioritizes solidarity and that works at scale. Cooperative business positions us to serve markets that traditional businesses cannot serve, and cooperative business positions us to solve the problems that traditional businesses create. And just to add on to an earlier comment by Pastor Lynch about how refreshing it is to be in a place that doesn't have these huge intractable problems like we have, we learned that, on average, the cooperatives in Mondragon donate 10% of their profits to the community. Someone asks, "What types of projects do you invest in?" And I'm waiting to hear, well, we invest in here, you know, eradicate racial injustice, solve homelessness and violence, right? They're putting their philanthropy towards civic groups and youth leagues. Like, imagine a world where those are the problems that we're solving. So.
That's beautiful. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, so you guys have heard some of our takeaways here. I'm going to give you a few more from all these amazing folks. If I can get to the next slide. There we go. And we also want to make sure you guys have time for Q and A, so I'm going to go a little bit quickly here. But one of the biggest things that we saw, again, was that, you know, this model is so little-known here in the United States, but also all over the world, but that it's still so powerful. And so just the importance of, you know, really kind of taking out those bullhorns and saying, "Hey, this is an important model we need to wake up to. We need to make sure we're using strategically," because it really, truly can make these types of differences in our community. So that was one of the first things we felt like was really powerful, that just the ability to truly transform our economy for working people. But that we can build wealth, you know, for so many folks, for the majority of the folks in our community by really balancing both the needs of people and business. So it doesn't have to be profit takes all, right? It doesn't have to always be, you know, getting maximizing profits. Profits are important, though. They were really clear to kind of share with us that, you know, we can't do all these things if we don't make profit, right? So that we have to have both, but profit serves the people. And so that was what was just so beautiful to see, that at the end of the day, their goal is about creating good jobs, family-sustaining jobs, and so they have to have profit, but it is secondary to the people that are, that they're serving. And then last but not least is that our community, our world is changing so fast, especially because of tech and AI, and that, you know, we kind of are at a crossroads where, you know, this could really be going in a way where we have a lot less jobs for folks, a lot fewer family-sustaining jobs, or in a direction we are intentionally building our future economy that is, you know, based around shared ownership and shared decision-making. And excitingly, you know, we found that we're actually really on our way here in Cincinnati. We're actually one of the top four cities in the country when it comes to employee ownership. So we already have 5,000 workers in both ESOPs and co-ops that are doing this. And so we want to make us be like the number one, right? So, but we feel like this is something that we really need to be intentional about if we want to see, you know, our city thrive like Mondragon's been able to thrive over the course of, you know, decades now. So, so there was some exciting things that we were able to take away. We also just wanted to share with you guys some, a little bit about what government is doing in other places in our country to really support this type of economic development. So we have several cities kind of showing kind of some of the, you know, investment that they've been putting into this type of economic, you know, development and workforce training programs. We also have some examples of state support, of things that have recently passed, lots of tax credits that are going to really just encouraging this type of development, loan funds that are being created, even, you know, kind of a department that's really focused, right, on this type of worker ownership. And then at a federal level, and some of these things, we've been really excited to work with Congressman Greg Landsman on, but we just recently saw the Work Act that was passed that authorized $50 million to help establish employee ownership centers across all of our states. They're, right now, they have Tech Hubs program that is coming down, really trying to expand employee ownership into the tech and innovation businesses, and a lot more that's happening. So we really want to be collaborative partners with you all and figure out what's best for our city, what can work for us. So just some terms of next steps that we've been thinking of. So recently, you all said that you wanted to see 25% of your $8 million Human Services Fund to support comprehensive workforce development. And so we just want to make sure that it's really clear that worker-owned businesses empower workers by offering these family-sustaining jobs, providing ownership opportunities to folks, especially from our marginalized communities. So we were so appreciative of, you know, the dollars that were put towards this work last year. We requested $300,000, and we were able to get $100,000 towards our loan fund and towards technical assistance. This year, we put forth a $400,000 ask to really put forth $200,000 into this kind of business coaching and technical assistance, and $200,000 into the loan fund, kind of based off what's been really successful in other cities. And one thing to note about the $200,000 to go into the loan fund is, right now, this could potentially catalyze an additional $250,000 to $500,000 of investment. We're working very closely with the Greater Cincinnati Foundation to potentially do an impact investment, and this could be something that would really make a big difference in what they decide to do. And then, as you guys also heard from Denise, that, you know, one of the things that can really kind of raise the awareness and also really make this something, you know, it's possible, the type of business model we want to see in our city is creating a worker-owned business designation and really prioritizing worker-owned businesses in awarding of city contracts. So those, I think, some of our, you know, next steps. And again, we'd like to work with you all to come up with other ones. I don't know, Barb, if you want to come back up?
Oh, my goodness. That was a wealth of information, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to go on my notes just a little bit. First, I just want to say, as we are wrapping up the presentation, this is an organization under your purview. So it's something you can, you know, stick your chest out and be proud that Co-op Cincinnati is already operating in the region. So you can be proud of that, that you know a little bit more about the depths of what they're doing. I want to thank Co-op Cincy for the work that you're doing and the collaborative effort of bringing us all here. I also want to thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to thank the committee for giving us this opportunity to come before you. I want to thank you all even for your previous donation and support, along with the mayor and the rest of council. Currently, Greg in our office, Congressman Landsman, of course, you all know he wants to be called Greg. He's still who he is. We're currently in talks and in meetings with the Department of Labor to look at what we can do and how we can support legislatively. So we have some additional meetings coming up soon. We also want to be a federal partner to support pulling in state reps, council members, and all politicians to the table, just to support the effort that's going on here. I love everything that was said by everyone that came before. I just want to lift it up as we close and open it up for Q and A. Kirsten reminded us that even after the Civil War, they were able to thrive in a tumultuous time like we even see in Cincinnati right now, they were. You heard from GCF that every dollar spent in Co-op Cincy is well worth it. So I just want to reiterate those things and lift that up. We heard from George, from a legal perspective, that the widely distributed equity ownership and voting rights was pivotal and it's key. We supported, and we know, just from my tenure even being here as Greg's Chief of Staff, we supported organizations through the year that have had challenges being able to spend down their dollars. So you can see that Co-op Cincy is not an organization that will have a challenge with that. They have 16 co-ops within their organization, so they have enough co-ops within to spread the funding around and really support some of the smaller co-ops that are within the unit. We also heard from All In Cincinnati that they're going to create a certification process. We believe in putting in a process. I've seen you all legislate that way, putting in good process, doing your due diligence, making sure things are evidence-based. So I love that this model supports those efforts. We heard from our faith-based partners that it's difficult but possible, that we need Community Economic Development, CED, that business is scalable, and I love that you can't do the work without having a faith-based component at the table, right? As this model was originated by priests. We also heard from some of the co-ops that the multicultural nature of the co-ops is intentional. They're intentional about making sure they're supporting diversity. So I love that. I just wanted to lift those things back up. This is a model and an organization and an initiative that's clearly focused on the whole and not working independently, which is the spirit of Mondragon and what the originators of co-ops stand for. So thank you all so much for having us here, bringing such a robust delegation. And now we're opening it up for question and answers.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. Ellen, Barb, everyone, all the presenters, we really, really appreciate this presentation. So we have, I know we have questions. Let me just start by asking, because I know that Kristen and I talked about this last year when she was taking us on a tour, but can you go over some of the benefits that the companies or the businesses get when they, when they join a co-op? Like, you know, are there health benefits, retirement benefits? We heard about college, education benefits, all of that.
Yeah. You want to go? Either one?
Go for it. Okay, yeah. So our first stop on that tour was Sustain Energy, which is, I actually just want to really quick, because we have some people that didn't speak today but are worker owners, and I wonder if they could just quickly raise their hand. Well, all worker owners here, if you could raise your hand.
Thank you for coming.
All right, so I am grateful they're here. And one of them is from Sustain Energy. So Sustain Energy is also organized by the steelworkers. And what we were talking about was, this is one that is residential insulation and solar, and that their wages start at $18 an hour, and that they keep working. Like, at the moment, the lowest one is $19 an hour, but generally, from a hiring perspective, it's 18. But that they have profit sharing, and they also, they're worker owners, so profit sharing among all workers, even if you're not a worker owner. And then their worker owners also get money called patronage. But they also belong to the steelworkers. And one of the opportunities about belonging to the steelworkers is that you get access to free college education for your family. They offer that, which is really remarkable. Incidentally, at our Harvest, the United Food and Commercial Workers, so that's another co-op we have, they offer the same benefit. So any family member can get, can get free college.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
And then you also mentioned the different co-ops in different cities working together. So, for example, Dayton went with, some of the Dayton people went with you. So how do the Dayton co-ops and the Cincy co-op share resources?
Yeah, so we are, we're sister organizations, and we share resources a multitude of ways. I mean, definitely, our movement here in Cincinnati inspired them to get started. So they came and visited some of the things we were doing and said, "Okay, we want to bring this, you know, to Dayton." So they've been doing it now, I think, six or seven years. And obviously have an amazing grocery store that they've been able to get off the ground called Gem City Market. But we share resources around training, around how to create good co-op culture. We've just done actually two rounds of, we have a co-op boot camp where we take groups through, like startup groups, from start to finish through 14 weeks. And so we've been doing that jointly. But really just trying to say, how do we scale this as much as we can and make this as broad as we can in our communities? So.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and so my vice chair, oh, turn the lights back on. Okay, and vice chair, President Protem Parks. Ooh, I got it this time. Ms. Andrews, I didn't have to call you over. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I really wish I could have gone. I wanted to go so much. Honestly, what I was thinking is, you guys were talking about all of the innovation, cooperation, equity, that the difference in this country is that our discriminations are based upon race. Is, that's not the case where you guys are. So it's just, otherwise, it would be class.
Yeah.
I, you know, what you described is the world that we dream of, that we really want to happen, you know? And if we could get past those barriers and actually work together, it would happen. I do believe that there's a big difference of discrimination based on race because it's so systemic. I know, I know that was gloomy, but it is.
It is, but it's highlighting a serious truth about our existence here.
Right. What I was going to say, I think one thing that is really impressive about this group of co-ops is they were started by an ethnic minority in Spain. So they were, you know, it's the Basque region, and so they were forced to stop speaking their language, to stop celebrating their customs when Franco, you know, took over. And this was a form of resistance, right? They had tried to overthrow the dictator, they lost. So this was a way to kind of fight back and keep their community strong. And now they put tons of resources into kind of keeping that culture vibrant and alive as much as possible. But it is definitely, you know, different, a different context.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was fantastic. If you would indulge me, I have a few questions. So what I was really confronted with in your presentation is, I think maybe Ta-Nehisi Coates talked about it being like, kind of stuck in the mar, stuck in the mud. And so there was this, everyone who spoke was speaking from a place of such deep inspiration and such deep state of what could be. And if I'm being very honest, I was like pushing back from that, like, you know, like, because I feel very much, particularly in budget time, like, end up with what we have right now. So I appreciate the moment of being challenged, of being stepping out of what sort of guides day-to-day. I have three questions. So my first question is, this, so the ask is 400,000. So just walk through what that gets us, what that, what will that do?
Yeah. So we provide very kind of hands-on, wraparound technical assistance for all of these businesses. So whether they're coming through our startups, our incubator, which, you know, there's some incubators where, you know, they kind of go through, they do a great job with their business plan, and then it's kind of like, "Good luck." Well, that's not how we operate. So we kind of then wrap them in kind of ongoing weekly TA, helping them really to get to that next step and continue to thrive. We do kind of weekly team meetings, helping them build that cooperative culture. So we know that even though we live in a democracy, if we don't work at it, right, we won't really, you know, see the benefits of that. We won't really see that participation. So we help them build that culture through financial, you know, training, business training, communications, conflict, skill management. And, and so that TA is kind of what for any of the groups that are getting this, trying to help them be as successful as possible. And then the other half of that is to go into our loan fund. So we know a big piece of why we don't have a lot of businesses that are being led by some of our historically disenfranchised communities is a lack of access to, you know, resources. And so these funds will allow folks to get those startup loans, and will allow businesses like Shine, that you heard, to have business owners be able to sell to their workers, because we know that these workers are not coming in with lots of personal assets. So there has to be a way to help them buy, you know, at a fair market price from those owners. So those are kind of the main components of the ask. And what I was mentioning is that we have the opportunity potentially to kind of leverage that, almost to kind of double that money or more through an impact investment that can kind of help with the loan loss reserve so that we can have investors like Greater Cincinnati Foundation being willing to kind of take a little bit of a risk with some of their money.
So, so this, the sustaining of the existing 16 organizations, is there an estimate of growth with, so the 400K leverage can do how many more? So the 400K leverage can do how many more?
Yeah, so I think, you know, I know we can give you an exact number, but we've been seeing kind of an exponential growth in our group of co-ops. So I think right now, our goal is to have like five, five to six new ones this year. And I think with having these additional resources, we can definitely expand on that a whole lot more. So right now, we have over 100 workers in our co-ops, you know, over 75% people of color, over 65% women. And we anticipate that having more resources can really catapult that even further.
Thank you. And so I guess my other question would be, like, you, there are a number of people who are in this group who are deeply ingrained in the city, they know the city, know the history of the city. Can you paint, what's the pathway? So like, let's say that this is truly successful. By how you measure success, what does that look like in our city from both like a metric perspective, but also from just like a cultural perspective? Like, paint the vision?
Yeah. So, you know, we want to see, as Kristin often says, we want to see 80,000 people employed in these types of businesses. We've really seen this kind of tipping point happen in Mondragon, Spain, whereas, you know, they have 80 worker-owned co-ops in their network, but there's over 1,300 co-ops throughout the Basque region, because they've just kicked off a whole movement, right? Of this is just how business is done. And so, you know, we want to see levels of inequality like they're seeing, right? So they're on par with our Nordic countries that are kind of, you know, recognized as the top places in the world, right, in terms of, you know, quality of life. And so those are the things that we would like to see here. And I would say, in terms of, another piece of the path is that we have so many businesses that are transitioning right now from, you know, these baby boomers that are all retiring, you know, across the country. It's like $46 trillion worth of wealth that is transitioning over the next 10 to 15 years. And so this could be a real crisis of just more stratification, right, more, you know, kind of disparity, or this could be a way that we truly broaden wealth in our community. So just in the Greater Cincinnati area, based on the studies, there's about 6,000 businesses that are at risk right now. And so we would see, you know, a big piece of that, a lot of those businesses being sold to their workers. So I don't know if there's anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, so that adds to neighborhood stability. Like Ellen said, about just that crisis alone, private businesses represent like usually half the employment in a region. It can vary. And so at a time of transition in the past, 80% of those businesses have just closed, which is crazy, because it's just they didn't have, they didn't know who to, you know, who to sell to. Maybe they didn't have a child that wanted this. Most of those businesses were still viable. And so in terms of neighborhood stability, in terms of equity, in terms of shared ownership, if we're able to support that, those folks, the majority of them to sell to their workers, what a different city we would have. Because when you talk about culture, for example, one of the things that kind of most excites me about our work with the co-ops, these team meetings, so they're about sharing collective wisdom. They're about people of different backgrounds kind of coming together and connecting. We do this really simple activity called Two Positives and One Concern. But what's neat about that is people connect with one another as humans, even if they're frustrated in the work for something, like you're all of a sudden reminded you're humans again. You're also setting the stage that I want to hear every single voice, because everyone can identify two positives about anything in a concern. We're flexible in the concerns. But like, anyone can do that. And so you're setting an expectation that every single person is going to participate, regardless of their education level. So for the rest of the meeting, regardless of their background, regardless of their history. And so what kind of culture, so we're doing all kinds of things about conflict resolution, about paying attention, about how do we engage in crucial conversations, like things that have to happen for us to work well in the diverse city we live in, which reminds me of just sort of one thing in what we were talking about before, about we live in a very multiracial, very diverse, very diverse, class-wise diverse, all kinds of ways area. And one of the things that I do think is interesting is when people come and you create intentional spaces like I'm talking about, and you build trust up over time, I do believe that all of our internal barriers and biases, they get shaken up, you know, like they start to shift. And especially when we put some more intentionality on that, which happens in the course of our co-op culture-building efforts, I think it's interesting. And I think, the thing I wanted to say, though, and kind of my mind's going in multiple places, but something that is neat about that we have in our history here, we actually, the United States has a deep, deep cooperative history. It's not something that we talk about, but there's, when, just to look at the African-American experience, even just to put a major spotlight on that, there's an extraordinary book called Collective Courage, which highlights that basically, from the times of slaves arriving in the United States, these mutual aid societies that came together to buy slaves' freedom, to support each other in different things, like it traces this whole history of collective activity that wasn't always officially cooperatives, in part because of discrimination and because of inability to fully incorporate. At other times, they were fully incorporated and have led to remarkable training sessions that have led to today, different experiences. Cynthia Pinchback Heinz, who was mentioned and who was on her way to Las Vegas to a really neat Black Cooperators Conference that Mona's also going to, that, but basically Cynthia grew up in a place in Virginia that has this remarkable cooperative history. And she noticed what the different standard of living was there based on others. So this book is really, really cool. But also, so just to feel like we have a lot in our history to build on, and not just there. The United States has 50,000 cooperatives today. 3 million people are employed. They control $3 trillion of assets. All this sounds shocking, and it is, because we don't really know this history. And partly, that's because there's different kinds of cooperatives. We've been talking about worker-owned, but the biggest, most common in the United States are those owned by customers or consumers. So if you bank in a credit union, that is a cooperative. And there's 110 million of us that are part of that. This will be my last thing on this, like, kind of, I want people to know about our cooperative history, because I think our rugged individualism bit, like, we have a lot more to our story. And one of that was in, how did we even electrify the United States? When Phil talked about market challenges, like cooperatives come to the fore, utility companies liked dense cities, but they did not like going out to places where there were few people, because it wasn't very good rates of return. And yet, people needed electrification. So in the 1930s, in the New Deal, they enabled legislation so that residents could come together, build their own electric companies, which electrified 75% of our country. 42 million people received their electricity that way. So they have the power to scale. They're in our bones, really, and we can build on that.
All right, thank you. It's a great history lesson.
Wait, Madam Chair, can I just do one last question? I'm so sorry.
Oh, we've run out of time. Okay.
I ask for your permission, just one last question.
Okay, quickly, please.
Very quickly. With the city designation piece, you know, we have a real sort of focus on both MBEs and labor. What, can you just talk through that example, just really briefly? Like, how does, is it conflictual to have at the city level both a designation for co-op and a labor? Like, you mentioned an example of that working. How does that work?
Yeah. Yeah, so I think this is definitely something we want to be collaborative with you all to figure out the best way to structure it. Because if we were to say, you know, you could say just co-op, or you could say worker ownership, which could include ESOPs, and that could include very, very large businesses, right? P&amp;G, right, also has part ESOP. So we're not trying to do that, right? But we would say that, you know, I think it's something that can be like an additive, right? So a lot of these businesses are being run by folks who are people of color, who are women. But what's really challenging with that, with the co-op businesses, is you don't have like one owner, or three, I mean, 10, or 20, or hopefully, you know, hundreds, right? And so that gets very onerous with trying to certify if you're MBE or WB, and it changes, right? It's changing constantly who's owners. So we think it's also important to say, we really value broadening wealth in our community and having, you know, employee ownership, worker ownership. And so we would want to be thoughtful about how we would do it, but we do feel like it's something that we could really incentivize by doing something like this.
One of the reasons it came into our idea was because when we had a meeting when Markeah Carter was in the Department of Economic Inclusion, she highlighted that once you get to five, she thought five owners to certify was really like a lot. And to do that every year in the current program, she found that like, and so she was like, when we were talking about 10 and 15, and even that, she's like, uh-oh, you know, like, she's like, that's like a ton. And if that changes. So we were just trying to think, like, well, what is a way around that if it's a difficult thing to do with multiple owners? However, to Ellen's point, it has to be done with lots of thoughtfulness on every angle to make sure that any unintended consequences aren't, you know, and that the goals continue to be met.
Right. So that's something we'll investigate with our legal department. So thank you so much for that.